All right, welcome everybody. It is May 17th, 2022. This is the city council meeting for West Liberty, Iowa. I call this meeting to order. Our council members, Zacharias. Councilmember Dominguez here. Councilmember McPharren here. Councilmember Veronica. And absent is Councilmember Martinez. We'll move to approval of the agenda. Before we do that, I'd like to amend the new business part of the agenda to add the resolution to consider the sister city program when we get to new business.
Motion to amend as you described.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the amendment passed, we'll add that to new business, four zero. So now we will approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
And I heard a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is approved as amended, four zero. Move to the approval of the consent agenda. A motion to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Four zero. So, we will go into the public hearing section of this for public hearing on amending and increasing garbage utility rates. And we'll open the public hearing and start a discussion. Oh, sorry, do we have a motion?
Motion to open public hearing.
Second. All those in favor? It's gonna be, oh, roll call. Councilmembers Zacharias?
Yes.
Dominguez? Yes. McPharren? Yes. Zacharias?
Yeah.
All right, passes four zero to open the public hearing. So the, yes.
So Madam Mayor, in your package, you have the the draft updated based on the rate study provided by your conference committee. And the ordinance draft is an 18% increase. And then to include the identified annual review with a 3% increase to maintain the cost of operations.
As was discussed in the session a couple of weeks ago.
As you recall, the utility committee met and talked about the proposed, there were three different options that Chip Schultz had given to committee and we met with that. There are three superintendent and we've talked about the pros and cons of each of those. And this was the recommendation. And utility committee as well.
In fact, I remember that was like $4 per customer.
On the, on the 96 gallon container, it's about $4. Be a little bit less for the others. But that would be the highest.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
And then? Yes. Yes. So we'll close that public hearing. And we vote now, correct, on, okay, on ordinance 20220517-01, an amendment to Title VI Health and Sanitation, Chapter 1, Garbage and Refuge, Section 6-1-11, rates first reading. So we'll do a roll call vote. To make a motion.
Motion.
Second, thank you. And so, Councilmembers Zacharias? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, that passes four zero. Now we'll move into a second public hearing. If, if, if so desired.
A motion to open public hearing.
Thank you. Second. All those, or roll call. Yes. Yes. Yeah, okay. So we'll open the public hearing, amending the quota of ordinance provisions pertaining to residential lot requirements. Discussion, new.
This, this particular ordinance was taken to planning and zoning. And they're recommending approval and what it does with one of the residential subdivisions that is being looked at to create, they want to create zero lot lines. I don't want to call them duplexes or not because folks will actually own those units. And they went through this and this will take place in our two and our three districts where you can put in that zero lot line and have two units on the lots.
Any other questions, comments?
I think this is a good thing because I remember a few years ago, there was a family that wanted to buy two lots, put one home. This wouldn't allow them to do that, but if somebody wanted to do that with like a townhouse or something with that.
Their actual homes. Their homes, their side by side. Got it. And then they own, each of them own their own yard, but they have that fire protection in between.
Okay.
It would allow them to be able to have more of their side and front yard than it would if you were to put it in the center of a lot.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Roll call, motion to approve. Do we have to do that? That'll be, that'll be.
Just a roll, just a roll.
Oh, to close, sorry. Councilmembers Zacharias? Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve ordinance 20220517-02.
Second. We'll do the roll call. Councilmember Veronica?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Zacharias? Yes.
So that's four zero for ordinance 20220517-02. Passes four zero. We have a, a public hearing, another public hearing on amending amendment to Title 10, Chapter 10, Section 1011, definitions of home occupation.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Or Councilwoman Veronica?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Discussion on this?
Again, this item went to planning and zoning and they've recommended approval. We have a there was an individual that had gone before the planning and zoning in Mustang County for a project that he wanted to create as a, as a home business. And it's, it's one that I think has a lot of value here in the community, but in order for it to go through the planning and zoning process in Mustang County, it would have had to been rezoned as an industrial site, which in our mind created kind of a spot zoning and it wasn't a good use. So we kind of took it upon ourselves and started working with the individual. We had conversations, we talked with our attorney, we talked with our codifier to see if other communities were doing the same sort of thing behind this. And, and they do, it's, you know, it's not every city that does, but there are cities that do it. And that's kind of the reason that we brought this here. This individual owns a, an acreage on kind of east end of the community. His house is considered residential, he's got a number of outbuildings that are and what's considered an egg zone, and that's why we really didn't want to see that zone as an industrial site. So we talked to Terry, we, you know, talked to some other folks. And we came up with making the change to the code to allow this. His particular business, he's provided all the information that Terry needed, it is going to be under the same guidelines from, from USDA. So he has guidelines he has to follow and we felt very comfortable with that. Therefore, a change tonight.
And it's from, we could give you the address, but for most of you, when you say former feral's property.
But one of the small outbuildings will be utilized for this.
Any other discussion?
Motion to close.
Thank you. Second. Councilmember Zacharias?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Yes.
So the public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion to vote on ordinance?
Ordinance.
Go ahead.
2020, 20220517-3, a motion to approve.
Second. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Veronica.
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Dominguez? Yes. Councilman Zacharias?
Yes.
So ordinance 20220517-3, oh, 03 is passed four zero.
First read. So Madam Mayor, and all of your public hearings for the public will have knowledge, the first readings have passed. So at the next council meeting, we'll have the second reading on all of the ordinance.
So I have to do this all over again?
We will not have to do the public hearing, open and close, you will just have the reading of the second.
Perfect, great, good to know. All right, thank you. So move on to item five, vendor voucher claims. List number one in the amount of $437,240.32.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions, comments? And all those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes four zero. But we will move on to item six, public comments and/or correspondence. This is a time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. You state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to no more than two minutes. So we will start with public comments.
Good night, everyone. My name is Ruth Palma. This is for the first time and in one of the public hearings here, belong to the organization, listen to my voice, escucha mi voz. Estamos aquí porque como la última vez que nosotros venimos, creo que te hace aproximadamente más de un mes. We are here because the last time we was here about a month ago. Ustedes nos pidieron que, nos pidieron tiempo para, para poner a votación nuestra petición. You asked us for time to put the petition to vote. De respeto a eso, nosotros esperamos, hemos sido pacientes. Respecting your petition, we follow it and we've been very patient. Y al no tener ninguna este solución o algún resultado a nuestra petición, nosotros hemos venido este día. And because we have no Q and A or have a response yet, we are here today. Venimos con la misma petición que tenemos, creo que todos ya nos conocen. Este, queremos que, que ustedes nos den una fecha de cuándo que ustedes van a poner a votación nuestra petición. You, you are very aware of what is our petition. And we would like to have a date of when you guys going to put on the agenda this item.
Bueno, mi nombre es Elia, ya me conocen, no es la primera vez que estoy enfrente de ustedes.
My name is Zeca, you know me, this is for the first time I'm here.
Igual vengo a, este, a recordar que estamos aquí esperando su respuesta.
As well, I'm here letting you and remind you that we are still waiting for your answer.
No sé si se ha apuesto en proceso lo que nosotros hemos, hemos pedido.
We don't know if you have a work or process any of the petition.
Hemos estado fuera tres meses aproximadamente.
We are been out for about three, three months.
Sabemos que teni, tienen problema, pero nosotros necesitamos también una solución.
We know that you have, you have issues to solve, but we also have
Todo es un proceso. Todo es un proceso, nosotros sabemos que es un proceso, todo.
Every, everything is a process, we understand that.
Pero nosotros no hemos tenido comunicación, ni sabemos cómo va el proceso de nosotros.
But we have no had any communication and we don't know what is the resolution or the process that you are at the moment.
Entonces, el punto ahora necesitamos que nos pongan en la agenda para saber cuál es su decisión.
So to go to the point, we like to know when are you guys going to put this on the agenda to know your decision.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you so much. If you guys have, if you guys have any questions for us, please let us know. We, we want to answer you, any questions?
My question would be, I did speak to David from the Iowa Catholic Workers via email and let him know that Kara and I would try to get together and then make a plan so that we can put in place official finance committee meeting to move forward and I've not responded back to David, but is there someone else from the group who I should be directly corresponding to? An email I can get, you could write it on my tablet, that can correspond with all the members?
She said that, even if they, if they are a member of the world, I mean, as a person of the world, and I'm not a person of course, I'm a person of the finances. They start to look at us, we need to have a better, um, the only that's She said that you guys already have the, the, the electronic emails before, but we can do it again.
Okay.
They have no receiving information.
Okay. And I think we got that from David. Yeah, okay.
Madam Councilmember, I will, I'll look into the records and forward the correspondence that we have, repeating all contacts.
Okay.
And Madam Councilmember, if you would like, I can provide, the tentative financial committee has set a meeting on May 27th for their discussion.
Yep, so the finance committee will be meeting next Friday, the 27th, specifically to talk about how to, what's the best way to move forward in, in determining how to use the COVID relief funds that we have currently? I, I mentioned this to David and I'll ask him when I get back to maybe for my correspondence, but there are a lot of concerns specifically to the, the specific ask from switching me both. It doesn't mean that you all don't deserve this, it doesn't mean that you, you were, you were not given the justice that you deserve in working hard, paying taxes, not getting that relief. It means that we're working against a system that is prolonging the relief that you need. So I think what Kara and I agreed to do is try to look at at any ways that we could still provide relief for folks who were and will be impacted in the future if something were to come again like this, which is the purpose of the COVID relief funds is to put in place processes to be better prepared in the future and to uplift the community that was impacted. I think we, we have exchanged some ideas based on the feedback that we've gotten, one of them being specifically a community ID program that we're looking for. Other things that we have discussed, we just haven't had time to bet out the actual details and whether things would work. Talked to different community organizations that could help because as we've said, we don't have the administrative capacity to organize a program that would be beneficial for those who are impacted. So we would need legally, an entity to help us coordinate that and everything. And these are things that we'll talk about next Friday. And then the next step would be is that we would propose to the council at the next council meeting, how we would want to move forward. Whether that is we had time to put together an actual where we would ask for a vote or, or what have you, but I can update David and whoever's on that email chain after Kara and I have met next Friday. Yeah, one, one thing we did agree on that we, we very much appreciate you guys always showing up and, and demanding what you need and, and that's democracy, right? And that doesn't go unnoticed. Another thing is we would definitely want to, like, ask for feedback too on, on those, those thoughts and ideas and, and, and see because that's important too, the feedback from the community. And, and can kind of help guide us and, and the impact that we can make on, on what we come up with, so. I don't want you all to think that you're not being included because we will offer that to provide that feedback. Kara, do you want to add anything?
No, not everybody. I think there isn't any more to add other than we're going to meet, uh, we come Friday.
What time does that mean?
10:00 AM, I believe.
10:00 AM?
Yeah.
Is it over here or at City Hall?
No, it would be at City Hall.
Yeah.
They're asking if we can be present, how we send our colleague back.
At the committee meeting?
Uh, maybe, I don't know if there's, if they can. So the purpose of their committee meeting is to just do as they stated, it's, it is a public, it's not a closed, it is open to the public, we just do not have the capacity, the space capacity to hold.
Everybody. But I mean, I'm wondering if they couldn't have a representative, you know?
That would be a change.
Yeah. I think that would be okay if there was two or three or one or two people. You might have the room.
More than two.
Two, right.
Yeah, maybe even one in case, well, we may, we're going to have our staff there. So if, if you could just kind of designate a representative who would be able to to show up, that would be fine. Does that make sense?
Ruthie is saying the yes because they want to be there because if you have any questions, we can provide answers and help you to finalize that decision.
Absolutely.
And she also mentioned the, as we said, we are willing to help to do whatever it takes to facilitate the transition and the movement of the money once you guys have decided.
Thank you. Thank you.
So Ruthie says, thanks, reminding also where you have to have to remember that the amount of money that we are asking is only 180 checks. So it's not like a big mobilization of things, so it can be done easily.
Yes, it, it can be done, that's not in question, but what's in question is the city itself didn't get a large pool of money. And also there are things that we have to do to report back to the government, how do we measure impact? And also provide privacy for individuals who are getting that money if that's the route we go. You know, there's a lot of questions and I That's not true. Yeah, we have to report back. April 30th was the deadline for the first report.
It was very detailed.
Yeah. I can send you information if you like on what was given to you. So. Any other question? No, not now, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Does the city clerk will actually make $111,000 in salary?
I think that's all public information that you can request, but right now it's not the correct times to discuss. Unless, I guess, the city clerk wants to speak, but sorry, I, I talked before you. I just needed to talk. Wanted to know if the city clerk made over 100 and some thousand.
I mean, again, I, I, it's public knowledge, I mean, I'm referencing that we just released our first pages and that was the time I was serving as interim.
Exactly, and treasuries. Three jobs. Do we have? Anyone on Zoom or chat? I'm sorry, I can't see the screen.
I don't see anyone coming up on the chat. And because there's such a large attendance, it, it does sometimes become challenging to manage unmuting. I would just remind the attendees by Zoom to be respectful of when they do ask if they could even come into the chat room and say they'd like to have, they'd like to speak, so then that would allow us time to get our council prepared.
Could I just make a simple statement about the public comments? Yeah. Just, and I think you, you had mentioned that a few weeks back when we were meeting at the high school about the public comment section is not something that is mandatory, I guess. It is something that each body, governing body allows at whether they want it or not at their meetings. And West Liberty has, since I've known it, pretty, been pretty good about allowing public to, to speak, but it by no means means that it is a platform of question and answer. So I just want to have, and I will acknowledge that I have allowed that because I, I feel like this force is, you know, key to a democracy in general, but just to, to being, to being a human being. But, yeah, so I guess, I guess that's, that's my thought and, and I appreciate council kind of indulging me in that as we've allowed this to happen. So. We, we, we want to hear from people and we want people to have a voice to, to say what they feel. But it is just a reminder that it isn't a platform for a question and answer session. What, if you have a, a question that you really want answered, we would forward it to the necessary professionals that deal with that on a day-to-day basis and they would be able to answer you in the appropriate time. So I just wanted to throw that out to the general public on the, I guess, routine or the, the way our meetings operate in that regard. Okay, did you have any affirmative, anything from Zoom? Okay, then we'll move out of public comments into city council, public comments or correspondences. Council, have anything to share?
Uh, I do, I don't believe I got anything in particular. But I did have a question on, is City Hall going to be? But I did have a question on is uh City Hall going to be closed for the holiday? City Hall will be closed for Memorial Day.
It's city services, I mean.
And the city services, uh we will, our communication director will put up the reminder about the change of services and also I refer back to the calendar that we provide that um given outline on this statement. Uh council member, I just also like to add that the city hall um has been closed for walk-in services. We do apologize, um but unfortunately due to medical situations, we have not had enough staffing to cover the front office. But we are still maintaining the phone calls and collecting payments through drop boxes. And we really do appreciate our customers' patience. And um the staff member that we do have um also is trying to work and it's somebody that needs that one-on-one. They're they're working with them to get them in and get those things resolved. So we thank our community for our patients and we want to make sure we have both these staff and and our safe to our customers.
So that kind of unless there's other um council members who have anything to share. That's a a good transition into item three, the city manager and where city clerk, public comments or correspondence. Um so we will, we will move on to item seven, we'll business discussion and appropriate follow-up of the MOU twenty eight agency proposal submitted by the West Liberty Fire and EMS Agency. So I I I mean, I guess we can open up the discussion amongst council if we want. Um, well, obviously, um but I think where counsel is is sitting, um is we have had a uh there has been an independent consultant who has um gone over the proposed twenty eight, the MOU twenty eight E agency proposal that was submitted to us and made notes on this uh this proposal from from kind of in a a very objective sort of administrative kind of thoughts on all of the different ramifications or thoughts that come up with each paragraph of this MOU. And uh up until now, we've not made that that document public. It it is my recommendation and I have, I have asked this, I I have asked the the fire chief and the assistant chief um if they would want to sit down with this consultant. And uh I did not get an affirmative answer. I did not get a no, but I did not also get an affirmative answer. Um but I think the best step to move forward for us would be to vote to release this document um to the public um and to to the fire department, obviously, perhaps giving the fire department and the the rural trustees, uh the uh the first dibs, I guess, uh to look at this before we release it to everybody. Or maybe that's open for discussion, I don't know, um and then and then release it so that folks can see it. And then to uh I guess, respond to that proposed MOU twenty eight agency proposal um to respond with the proposal, uh that was the last draft of the MOU um that was sent back oh oh a year ago. The twenty eight E, sorry, so many things, thank you. Twenty eight E uh that the council approved a year ago um as as a starting point for negotiations. So do you need a motion? Uh yes. Uh make a motion to go ahead and release the consultant review of the proposed MOU between the city of West Liberty, West Liberty Fire District and the volunteers. And I'm sorry, was that a second? And so now uh we can discuss that. As far as the MOU that we have, that we were given at hand, uh I do find that that has a lot of um parts to it that isn't necessarily in the best interest of the city. So I um actually like the consultant's review because he is independent.
Not an attorney.
Correct, not an attorney. It shed some light on that and I feel as though the um unable to move forward, I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to be I guess, strong-armed into having to agree to these three specific bullet point items before we even can move forward. And I would add too that I I really hope that the volunteers, not just the the assistant chiefs and the chief or the officer, all of the volunteers when this is public to read through it because it is very um. For me, it was, it was pretty uh eye-opening. And I think it's important, I mean, don't just view it and be like, no, no, no. I think, please, I'm asking to to make an effort and really read through this. This person, the consultant, has worked with many, many fire departments, okay?
And his partner who helps is also a fire, a retired fire chief.
Right, who was there during the process of even needing to create twenty eight Es um for fire volunteers. So I just hope that you all, um even the public, can really um look through this very thoroughly and provide any feedback um that you have. If this was drafted in cooperation with an individual named George Oster, a retired fire chief, Oster. If um city manager Huglen could kind of give us an update as to George, Mr. Oster's position?
Uh George is, I would say, semi-retired and he's still willing to um come work with the city and the volunteers if that's something that they desire or just the volunteers. Um he's a former fire chief, he ran the, um it was wrong, he ran the Iowa State Division of Fire. And I actually um used George's services when I was in the beta. Uh we 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 had a full-time chief in the volunteer department, we had some issues. George was able to come in and have everybody and see both sides and see what was working with solution. And I know George has helped a lot of departments across the state.
Oh, by how?
If there were an issue um that needed to be resolved, I mean, George was is kind of viewed as the as the fire, you know, god or ruler in the state. Um he is retired, he's in a nursing home, but uh at least according to our consultant, if George needs to come to a meeting, they'll arrange transportation and he's going to come around. Have that conversation, just be able to set the table and have an open and honest conversation about what's doing and what's not.
Yeah, and and and.
And and how we can work together. He's helped a lot of departments, Paul.
I I I I don't, this is not going to turn into to some sort of uh diatribe on the, not diatribe, digression into the credentials. At this point, um it's it's somebody who i- i- is a group of people um who um aren't part of this community in any way, um who have an objective view of these, having seen a number of them work or not work in the state of Iowa. Um and and it's just another way of sort of teasing out some of these issues uh that both sides are having with what both either side is sort of proposing. So um I'd like to keep it at that. We did have a good work session earlier on regarding um the twenty eight E agreement where we had drafted an agreement a year ago. And um we'd like to bring that back up again. And perhaps um with some um guidance from other resources, we could look at, you know, adding any specific items we need to that would apply in our case. But West Liberty is our own community and we um, I think we are able to move forward. And to add from what I've learned, the the twenty eight E agreement draft that was proposed, it was um thought to be a very agreeable um proposal that the city had made. This is back in what year?
Last year.
Twenty twenty one, that the city had made um adjustments to the proposal based on feedback from the rules, what the rule wanted and had agreed to those and had put those in the draft. Um, this is what I was told. And 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 the twenty eight E draft also includes a fire advisory board um that I've heard Chief Sicles um is really, that that option is really attractive to him and the volunteers to give them a little bit more autonomy. So again, if volunteers, which I know you all do things together as a team, which that's what I love about you all, if you if you can just read the draft, read the MOU, read the consultant, like really take time out of your busy lives, I hope, on a weekend or whatever or gather together and just read through it. I think that will be really beneficial.
It's uh there's, there's, I think, a pretty, pretty unanimous feeling up here that the volunteers are absolutely capable of, you know, and experts in their field. You know, and we appreciate them, that that's not in question. You know, they have their own, the volunteers have their own organization, their own nonprofit organization that's filed with Secretary of State, so they can, they have their own setup currently. In fact, I think that uh registered agent is Mr. Tharp with that group.
No, you know what you're talking about, that's not who runs.
No, and this is not a time for public comment.
We're not tired, and so the the rural um fire, or excuse me, the uh the the volunteer fire uh uh volunteers, they do have their own group, they have their own nonprofit group.
That's a misdirection if I don't, that's not.
No, no, we're not having.
I think it's appropriate to respond, don't you?
This is not what the meeting is.
And if I, no, Mr. Tharp, if I have to ask you to be quiet again, I will ask you, I will have you escorted out of the building. Um, anybody can look up nonprofits that are registered and active in the city of West Liberty. There is an active um West Liberty Fire and EMS Association. And there's an active West, West Liberty, um, West Liberty and rural townships EMS or fire and EMS Association.
It's currently active.
Please just go online and look it up. That's all we're saying, you can, you can see who the agents are. You can look, even look back to twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty nineteen and see who those agents were that helped um the volunteers create this.
Yeah.
It is all public knowledge.
Yeah, it's all public knowledge, it's all written in there online, if you go to the Secretary of State's website.
This MOU that was provided to us is a starting point. If anybody in their right mind told that this was a finished document, they are obviously wrong. This is a starting point, we are going to propose a modified uh twenty eight E agreement that we drafted a few years ago and we can start talking.
I would add but to to what you said, Jose, that yes, a- and I think there's no disagreement that it is a starting point uh that has been communicated to us verbally and otherwise. However, it is a starting point, if you look at it, that requires us to agree to three very big things before we, it's like a pre-starting point, which counsel is unanimous in, I think, in in agreeing that we cannot start from the pre-starting point as proposed. Um and that we have to actually start from a true starting point, which is, to me, it is essentially going through what was proposed. Um and um going through what was proposed and talking in everything out, which is, again, with talking points based on what the consultants or anybody else has to say.
There's so, there's so much information and misinformation. I think all of this is so muddied that uh we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about the uh the current situation with a twenty eight E agreement with the rule to provide fire service, which is currently under litigation, which we can, can't really talk about much because of the litigation. And then on top of that, we have a parallel stream that we're also talking about that gets muddied in between with the volunteers wanting to set up their own organization and entity and be on their own and independent. Well, that's fine, by by my personal opinion, I have no qualms with that. You already are, as volunteers, your own independent organization. The only uh, the only problem is that i- in the MOU, it's, it states that that the volunteers want to be able to utilize all and have ownership of of equipment, vehicles and building. Which again, we are not opposed to figure out how that works, but it is, as if, as I understand it, illegal for us because those were paid with taxpayer dollars, be they from the rural or the city. We cannot just give them away because it's millions of dollars worth of assets.
Um, we're not, we're not doing public comments, Ms. Marie. It's, it's really difficult because we have a really strict deadline. We have some amazing volunteers who are put there, what they love to do on the line to try to move us forward. And I think in some way, yes, it has, it's put a lot of stress on things because we don't want our volunteers to resign. But we also cannot solve any of this in two weeks, in two weeks. There's no way.
Litigation on another matter.
Yeah, there is no way. So we're, we keep giving these different options of, let's work with you, let's do this and this and this. And there's no movement, like we are working.
We have asked for mediation, which was declined.
Exactly.
It was, it was declined by counsel for.
Not the city council.
Not our council.
Not our council. SEL Council. Um, it was declined in lieu of saying, and it was, it was communicated that no, there's no mediation necessary at this point because this is what we're giving you and this is what we expect you to agree to.
That wasn't supposed to be something that was set in stone, that was supposed to be something that was just supposed to be a rough draft to go off of.
Yes, we understand that. However, what was communicated to us is, yes, this can be a rough draft, but in order for us to even talk to you about this rough draft, you have to agree to items one, two and three of the MOU.
Says who?
Uh this is what was communicated. And again, Mr. Reed, one more time and I will also ask you to leave. And then after. After, after.
I didn't agree to that.
I please step out and quietly or. And you know, this is exactly why I want the volunteers to really help us out and read all the documents to be, to be um, to do the the self-work as well to understand what they're signing to, what they, what conversations can happen during the meetings. Like I, there's a lot of brilliant people and volunteers, as volunteers, that can have a lot of input to say as well. Um because we're all on the same page in wanting to um keep a healthy volunteer organization going. So I I was told.
I, I was told by a couple volunteers that they didn't even read the MOU before signing. A, a document, so that is, is pretty.
I'm staying in the past, that's. This document was done by. The council of the fire department. On his own. With no input from the.
I want there to be input from the volunteers as well. You guys do all the work. You answer the calls, you gear up, you, you risk your lives, you go into buildings. You save lives.
Yeah, like I said, that, that is not in dispute. I think we're all agreed.
And for me to. Who has worked really hard and, and Mr. Martinez too. We want to make sure that. The volunteers are, are informed, that they know all options. Um that they're a part of the process because they do the dirty work. And they choose to do it for free, no less. So that, that's just my personal opinion. Um and how much respect I have for, for those men and women that risk their lives for our city and for the role. That's all I have to say about.
You have a motion, second. Do you want to move on?
And should this be a consent or a roll call? Um all in favor of releasing the consultant report and proposing or re-proposing um the MO, uh the. Twenty E from a year ago, draft from a year ago.
Fine.
Any opposed? And that passes four zero. Um we will move into new business. Here is on it. Thank you, Sharon.
We will move on to new business, and so um discussion and appropriate follow-up for the Sister City program. So um this is to discuss this program. Um and then later for the amended, we will vote on the resolution that was presented to us. Um so. Yeah. So I'll go ahead and, and discuss what I know. Um. We, I think we mentioned it in an earlier council about the idea of a sister city, which is. Was very attractive to me because I've heard um of a lot of success for other cities that had sister cities, and what a sister city is, is basically. Um a relationship with another city in another country that is, that could be similar to ours or have similar goals. Um uh an opportunity to learn about different um communities of different countries and, and different people. And, and really kind of um makes another bridge to another country and culture and. Um allows for. Us to kind of uh make the world a little bit smaller and, and um. Branching out and having those different resources and expertise and, and everything. I think it's a really wonderful idea. Um We Lead has been working really hard to create. All of the behind-the-scenes things that would make this work. Um and I've read through what was proposed, and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful start. Um if. Ms. McFerrin or, or Ken wanted to add anything, I invite you all.
I, I just want to say that we uh have been, a- as a council person, um that first term. We had a meeting with John DeBeek, I believe his name is, from Muscatine, he is our contact person with Sister Cities. And he had first come and introduced this idea about three years ago, three, four years ago. And at that time, we were having ch- changeover um with council and things were um. Uh kind of gearing up to uh the way it is today, and we just. COVID happened and things just got, got dropped off. So uh. Mr. DeBeek came back and talked to us again on a, on another level with, you know, a new set of uh leaders. And our new economic development uh executive, and we, we feel the time is right to continue moving on. It's. It's like an exchange program that you would have in your home, but only we're doing it with another city. And not only is it great for cultural exchange, but we hope to be able to capitalize. Off of this from an economic perspective, which is going to benefit us um incredibly. Um Muscatine has several sister cities, as a matter of fact, and uh they have had their um economy impacted. By doing that as well, so it's, it's a positive uh move.
And it will be something we, you know, we will reach out to the community and, and have as many voices at the, at the table as. As want to be involved when we go to think about. Um which city, what in the whole wide world we choose, and um it could be a really fun, cool thing for our town.
Yeah.
Ken, is there anything you'd like to add? Just that I think this is a tremendously exciting program. This council report that they're cleared out has huge positive economic implications, so we're, we're excited for that. If we choose to partner with Sister Cities International, which is another five oh one C three. Uh organization, they can help us in the selection process, uh which is. Really neat, but what they can also do is help us as we build our program and as we go throughout this brand-new journey. They, they've got a whole professional staff there at their national office that they can help with the protocol and, and understanding what kind of liability insurance we have for welcoming. Families into our community for. Anywhere from a, a weekend to a, uh an entire semester if we're looking at school exchanges, so. Um there are some hurdles that we've never. Jumped over before and, and being a member of that national organization will bring great benefit. Um it's very expensive for a community that resides. To participate in, in that national organization. Um there are two types of groups that can be a member of Sister Cities International, one is a municipality, the other is a five oh one C three nonprofit. So We Lead and, and the board at We Lead voted uh just last month to, to. Create a Sister Cities Committee and, and take on the administration, so the city doesn't have to be burdened with that. So we're, we're excited, we're here, we're ready.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Ken. And um shout out to Ed Marino for, for, who's a community member and a member of our school board who. To bring this forward and hook us up with, with this organization and hook Ken up and Me Lead up, so it's great. Alright, um I will go to item B, uh we'll set a date for a public hearing fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two budget amendment for June.
There's a resolution.
Oh, so the resolution we can do now?
Yes.
Oh, I thought so, but then I was like, no. Um so we will move to resolution, which has been provided, uh resolution two zero two two zero five one seven two two. Um consider, uh consideration of uh the Sister City program.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Uh that passes four zero, and we will move forward with that. Um, okay, so now we can go to B, we reset a date for the public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two. Budget Amendment, June seventh, twenty twenty two at seven thirty PM.
Motion to approve.
Second. What date was that, sorry? June seventh, twenty twenty two. Um, roll call or consent? Perfect. Uh although, uh discussion needed, is that cool for everybody? Um all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, we'll have the public hearing for that budget amendment on June seventh at seven thirty. Um, item C, set the date uh for a public hearing to amend the West Liberty Stormwater Utility Ordinance.
Motion to approve.
That's it. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, just um. We, the city had approved the ordinance uh a year ago, and the stormwater utility goes in effect July one this year. However, there were some, some items in the original ordinance that did not line up with our billing. So the amendments to the ordinance will be just that, they're semi-administerative, and there are some uh. Pieces in that that need to meet our billing uh process, and so.
Great. Thank you. Um. So just. We have a motion? Did we already do that?
We got the motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that passes four zero, we'll do that on, on seventh, twenty twenty two at seven thirty. Um we'll move on to reports. City engineer, how's that well coming?
Well, number two, the television, televising is complete, we did get a well log. We did get the television tape this week, we're kind of going through that tape as we speak. I did talk to Northway and ask them their opinions of the casing, they thought it was in pretty good condition, there was one area. And until I go through the tape, I'm not sure how deep it is where they saw light. Or water coming in, and that's not always a big deal, but we need to exactly be able to point out where it is to decide if it has to be repaired or if it's something that. Can go forward, so that, in general, I think the well casing looked really good from what I hear. So probably within the next month, we'll have the report ready for what to do to, on the next steps and the cost. So televising is complete, that's the good news. I did, I would like to also report on Rainbow and Maxon. We did have a meeting with the consultant for the electrical BMHG. Um pretty good news from them, it sounds like they have a layout ready and are looking at. Um putting the holes at the end of the. Right away, and the cost is back down to about a hundred thousand dollars roughly, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna um. Be tied to a number yet, because um they're supposed to providing us d- our drawings tomorrow. But from there, we'll take their drawings, put in the lighting for the actual trail, come back to you, probably the next meeting or the meeting after. With some options on trail lighting. And then we should be done a hundred percent with the plans. The, the um. The cost of roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Is pretty much what they gave us during the. Um uh CIP planning phase about a year and a half ago. So that's good news, because for a while it looked like it might be way higher than that, and I was very, very nervous, so. It's looking, it's looking a lot better, and it sounds like they've got some real good ideas, and uh we'll have plans supposedly tomorrow. From them. Any questions on either one?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, um city staff minutes?
Just if anybody has any questions on anything going on in the apartments. Directly in what's happening in the last couple of weeks. If you have any questions. And I would duly note that I will be on vacation at your next meeting, I'm going to be out of state. Uh June third through the tenth. Uh it's a trip that uh that we booked about. Nine months ago, so.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I would just add, um as we spoke earlier, we did finish the first uh report, required report for ARPA. So that's been completed. Um also, Deputy City Clerk and I have um. On, on top of expediting some work that we've been working with you folks on, we've also had a lot of electric reports, bonding reports. And um I know Deputy City Clerk today was also working on upgrades to our cemeteries before finally. So we're being, we're gonna be in a better position come these nicer months when we're working with um a lot of folks with genealogy or interest for. Uh purchases or lots of them, so. When does the pump open?
Open on Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Wait, it's not like that?
It's full of water.
There was a frog somewhere.
Lucky frog.
And I would just note too that uh. I've spent the last couple of weeks at the West Liberty Elementary and working uh with. Two third grade classes on a junior achievement program called More Money, and I've got one more session, it's just. It's been a blast working with those kids, I mean, there's, there, there's some smart kids there that get great questions and. Part of what they've had to do so far is they've had to create their own business. Some of them only put the work into it, and we've got one more session on Thursday, and we'll be wrapped up. Great group of kids, and, and I can say a few positive things about the school system there.
My, my son Austin loves junior achievement, or becomes more, he's in uh fourth grade.
He's in the fourth grade.
Yeah, he loves it.
Well, I would just like to add, we, we have a couple of retired teachers too. And I would say that all the years of doing junior achievement, it also gave us a, a. A stronger appreciation for our, our teachers, our educators and. Um, you know, handling classes and the curriculum, and all we had to do was go in and do this, you know. Thirty-minute junior achievement program that was already designed, so. Again, to all the teachers and retirees, we certainly have a great appreciation for. Um your classrooms and what you do, so. You're always there.
Alright, thank you. Thanks for doing that, David. Mini meetings. Uh any reports from committees, maybe the brains, we've already done sort of a bit of that.
Yeah. Well, we had a public safety committee meeting last Monday, but then we had a special meeting on Thursday, so I think we. Covered all that, yeah.
Great. Drive a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And I will say, uh second for Jose, uh all in favor?
Aye.